Excellent work. Thank you all for coming.
It's not working.
Not working, can you hear me now? I'll hold it real close. Okay, so, hold, step close to the mic, fellas, because you get away from it and they can't hear you. Y'all, thank you all for coming. If you don't know me, my name is Chad Hayworth. I'm the editor of the Newton County News. These are your candidates for North Ward, South Ward Alderman Mayor. The election is April 7th. I'm sure since all of you showed up tonight, we'll be sure to get out and vote. Thank you for that. Before we get started, I'd like, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to take a minute and do something that I thought the City Council frankly should've done on Tuesday night. As you all know, the city lost pretty importantly last week. Somebody who spent a lot of years working for the city and working for its people. If you would, I'd ask that you join me in going into silence and remember God for it. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, let's get started. We'll start down here with our South Ward Alderman candidates. Kind of how we'll do this tonight, so you'll know. We'll have the Alderman candidates, they'll introduce themselves. I have a question to ask them to kind of get them started. We'll go through the South Ward and the North Ward. And then I have some general questions for them. They'll come up and we'll ask them, let them have their answers. They're kind of on the clock a little bit. Then we'll go to the mayors, and I have some questions for them, kind of the same thing. They'll introduce themselves, I have some more questions. I've kind of got a couple of special questions for each of them lined up. We'll get to those. And then, we'll open it up, and if any of you all have questions, you can just raise your hand, we'll come out there, I'll let you ask it. We'll take some questions from the audience. You can ask, you can ask a question to all of them, and they can all take a shot at answering it. Or if you have a specific question for the Alderman, or for the mayors, that kind of thing. We're probably looking for broad kind of questions, right? If you have a specific question for a specific candidate, I'm sure they'll be happy to talk to you afterwards. We can stay around. The school won't kick us out until probably 7:30 in the morning when they start to be ready for class tomorrow, so we have plenty of time. And then we'll let them, we'll let them make a closing statement, and then we'll get out of here. All right. All right, so we'll start, here am I right, with Ira Hawkins. And Ira, if you'd come up and introduce yourself. And as you do so, the question I have is, as a by way of introducing yourself, is this. If you're, in your case, reelected, what do you want to accomplish in this next term of office? And try to be as specific as you can.
Thank you, Chad, from Newton County News. Appreciate everybody being here. My name is Ira Hawkins, running for reelection to the South. My name is Ira Hawkins, running for reelection to the South Ward. My goal has always been to bridge some of the gaps that we have in any city government that are, that we've had some struggles with. I've always felt like that I could mediate between strong differences of opinion, and I think I've tried to accomplish that pretty well in the last, the last term. But my goals have been always to provide, to help provide a community that is sound, structurally, in the ways of utilities, wastewater, water system, gas system. Always wanted to provide a strong parks and recreation system. When families move into Granby, they can be proud of the times that they go and enjoy themselves in the parks or in the community buildings. We also, I also, as an Alderman, am endeavoring to make a community that is friendly to small business and entrepreneurship. When somebody comes in, you can't make their businesses work, that's up to them. But a town can provide the greatest opportunity for those businesses to work. And I want to be a part of doing that. We need to be friendly to small business. We need to be friendly to families that are looking to a community for a comfortable place to live and raise their families. I've been here 40 years and raised a family here, have grandchildren that are here, and I'm looking forward to continuing on bringing those things to pass. I think we have come to several crossroads, and I think we're pushing forward in the right direction. And I just, looking forward to those of you supporting me on the South Side.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Kelly, you'll be next.
All right. My name is Pat Kelly, and I'm running for the first time for Alderman on the South Side. I attempted mayor last time, didn't work out too well, so I'm back to the Alderman. Never dreamed I'd ever see the time that I would want to be involved in city politics, and I really, truly do. I moved back to Granby to retire. I'm retired, I had the time to put into it. You don't realize the problems that are there until you go look at them and see them. And I do want to take my hat off to the City Council we have now. They've just recently made some tremendous, tremendous decisions that had to be made under pressure, and they did it, and I am absolutely proud of them. I said to Ira in a joking way the other night, "Put a sign in my yard." Well, that isn't a joking way. I do want the job, and I will campaign for the job. And I just say, I say that because the guy stepped up. When things are tough, that's when the goers step up. And I see Granby coming on a better path. There's too much fighting, too much victory, too much trouble, too many problems, too many things coming, too much family involved, too much stuff. To run it as it should be run has not been done in the past. But I see that coming, I see the good times are coming. I firmly believe that. And I would appreciate your vote for Alderman, because I feel like it's going to be on the system. We're going to be working as it goes. Bring up a problem, get them out in the open, let's discuss them. One year ago tonight, I said, "Fire that guy." He's the guy that run the sewer plant. They finally got around to firing him, and things were better, folks. We hard even as a bad guy. Investigate those people. Check out the people who work for the town. Find out who they are, where they come from, what's on their agenda, why are they there? Why are they doing that? You can do that. It's called a computer. Everybody can run one now. My granddaughter taught me how to run one. But you can check on people's history through background, it's out there. But if we all work together, Granby can be a productive place. I don't think it'd be an industry. I think we're a bedroom community, I want cleanliness, I want law-abiding citizens, I want honesty, I want integrity. That's why I want for Granby. I want them all to face up. As smart as a factory? No, I don't think so. We had a factory, called a Garmer Factory, made a living for a lot of poor people for a lot of years, and thank God it was here. They needed it. They needed it. I don't think we'll see the time when an industrial come in for Granby. But we can certainly be honest, fair, upright, and professional about everything we do. And I would appreciate your vote.
All right, thank you, Pat. Mr. Farmer, you're next.
Good morning. I'm a little tall for this, there we go. My name's Andrew Farmer. I am running for South Ward Alderman, just like them. I am for an open government, transparency. I like, I think the best kind of government is the government where everyone in town knows what's going on, which, most of the time they do. But sometimes it's hard to get information. Sometimes they go into closed session for an hour and a half, and they come out and say, "We were in closed session for an hour and a half and nothing happened." So, if elected, I would, I would try my best to avoid closed session meetings. I would, of course, I will continue filming even if I'm not elected and putting them on YouTube, because I think people who have access to what's going on in the city are the best informed voter electorate and the best kind of people to have in your town. With that said, if elected, I would like to see Granby make upgrades to some of their aging systems, the water system. I would like to see the sewer plant's issues worked out. There's a lot of trouble there. It's not going to be easy, it's not going to be fast. This is not a two-year fix, this is not a four-year fix, this could be five maybe if we're right. But I think Granby has some current councilmen who have helped set the town on the path to recovery, and on the path to a future. I don't see factories coming back to Granby, like Pat said. But I do see Granby being able to grow as an industry if we can get ourselves in a position to continue staying cheap and bring in faster internet. Small businesses are starting up on the internet, that is the best place to do it. And Granby is a beautiful place to live, it is an inexpensive place to live. If you're bringing in several thousand dollars a month from an internet company that you run that sells t-shirts, and your rent is only $200, $300, that's great. People will want to come and live here. I personally know someone who has considered moving here from the big city just because. So I think for that to continue would be a great boon to local businesses. I'm a local business person, my parents own JJ's, most of you met me there. My livelihood is dependent on this city. I have enjoyed city politics from a very young age, like, since I was nine, I'm pretty sure I dropped on my head. Lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
Just make sure to get out and vote. All right, thank you. Mr. Murphy, you'll be next.
My name is Tim Murphy, and I'm running for South Ward Councilman. What I'd like to see happen in the town is they are starting to come together, a council work together, bring in new ideals, get our wastewater system fixed, our water, parks and recreation, get a plan going toward that through the ballparks and the community building. But main, my main deal is to get the city working together for a plan that they'll stick to to get the wastewater on track. Like Andrew said, you're talking years to do it, but if they set straight with it and keep going the same way instead of patching up while we got by with it and continue to build it, will get people to come to this town. You'll have no negativity, positive results, like we have aging water pipes in this town. That is a concern that we're going to have to address. But to bring people in and have the community, we gotta offer them some wastewater, good water, parks, recreation. And I really think that a council could work together and get that process rolling. It would take some time, like Andrew said, it would take two, four, six years to get back on top, but we could move the right direction. We could look at programs that could help us, and I think I would be real good at that. I've been supervisor in several automotive businesses, but with the right ideals and the right gift of working together, I think we could have a great community. I moved here in this community 14 years ago, outside the community, but I've been in Granby. I love the people here. The people's what brings people to Granby. I was an outsider 14 years ago. Very friendly people. That's what brought me to this town. And I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the other end of town now. Ms. Brooks, you'll be next.
Hello. My name is Bobby Brooks, and I'm a candidate for a North Ward Alderman. And what I'd like to see happen in the town is better sidewalks for our children, and the infrastructure in our city is needing help with the water lines and such. And of course, the sewer issues, and all the other Aldermen have already talked and discussed this also. And I would just appreciate your vote, and I think I can do what the heart of the city and so would the city's soul. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Brooks has an opponent, Mr. Barrett. I thought he was going to make it tonight, and he may still, and if he does, we'll give him up here and jump him in, but in the meantime, we'll go with what we got. And so we'll go back this way this time. So, Mr. Brooks, you'll be first with my, my first question. And let's, let's go ahead and just talk about the sewer part a little bit. I think most people understand that there are some issues. I think most people understand that both the state and the federal government, let's just say they're paying attention to what's going on in Granby. Given those things, given that there's been at least the start of some improvements or a plan for some improvements, what's the, what's the City Council's role now, or what's an Alderman's role now in terms of moving progress on the sewer? And you'll be the first to answer. Do you get to step right up to the microphone?
Well, honestly, I was out visiting the sewer plant the other day and going over with our superintendent Victor about the processes that are going on, about, well, like the UV lights wasn't working, and they were really not managed or maintained properly for, well, it's been quite some time. And that was just one issue. And the other issue was where they collect the dirt and the rock out of the sewer system. When it's pumped from the bottom of the hill, it's sent to a collection facility which takes the sand and the grout out of the soach, the sludge. And that was an issue, because it's, it's never, well, I can't say never, but the pain is just real bad for us. All right, and then there was another issue further down the line on a pump that isn't working, which in turn pumps the sludge into separate tanks to be separated and stuff. And then after he went through all this, I'd asked him, I said, "So what do you think needs to be done first?" Well, he went to another problem right away. And I said, "Well, what about the problem with the UV lights?" And he said, "Well, we need the ballast." And those ballasts have been ordered and they are on their way. So then we went to the generator problem that he had said. And it had a starter failure, and he said he had that overnighted, so it was, it's already installed also the, the water. So problems already have been.
All right, thank you. Ms. Murphy, you'll be next. The question was, given that a process has started, what's the City Council's role, or your role as an Alderman, in moving the sewer repairs forward?
All right. First of all, I promise that they're going to come in and tell us what we have to get done. Then we need to, some stuff we can do on our own is like the sludge being removed. Sludge hadn't been taken out in a long time apparently. That's something that we can get started on that ain't really going to cost us anything that we have to do, that we can start without the EPA. Our first problem with sewer is how, the only way I can answer this, we're going to have to do what the government tells us that we have to do first, and then get the input of our new operator, of what would be second priority after what the government tells us, what has to be done. And then we take our, we trust our operator to tell us things that's aging or that needs to be replaced before we get back into a situation again like this. And the council, whoever it be, needs to stay upon that. And I, like I said before, I would like a liaison, one council member, take a department like that, and kind of stick with that, and report back to the other councilman, and tell them, everyone be involved, but have one over each department to, it's your, your job to handle this, and we all need together to make decisions then. That would be my process.
All right, thank you. Mr. Farmer, you're next. Same question to you. The process has started, where does the City Council and you as an Alderman take it from there?
All right, well, like Mr. Murphy said, the first thing we do is whatever the federal government tells us we have to do. And then the second thing we do is whatever our operator tells us. Victor, I've talked to him, I've been out there and toward it, it's, there's a lot of things that really need fixing. He could've just walked away, that job is a lot to handle, but he stayed, he's sticking to it, he's sticking it out even though they haven't gotten, well, they, I think they just got it helping. But I believe he's truly earnest in that job, and that anything he suggests to the council is most likely what needs to be done. So I think the council's role in what needs to be done out in the sewer is listening to Victor and paying for what he says we need to buy. I believe the current council has already approved a rate increase that will pay for the stuff that needs done out at the sewer plant already, and they've also approved a credit line, so that anything that is dire, we can pay for now and then over time. So, we just have to listen to our guy and buy the stuff.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, same to you, sir.
The bottom line is, it's all about the money. It's a cakewalk. The sewer problem is being fixed as we speak. Mr. Gene Spears is one of the most influential engineers in that technology in this part of the country, and we're proud to say the guy's from Granby. So Gene's going to get some work out of it. Not only does he know what he's doing, he personally knows the people involved in state and some in federal. So we don't have a problem. All we've got to do is raise the money. Get the money. The council has to go through the ways to raise money to pay for what they're doing. We've got the knowledge, we've got the staff, we've got the people. I think the city's going to be behind us on it 100%. It's something we've let go for too long at a time. But all we've got to do, we've got the right men on the job, now we just got to raise the money, tell them to do the job, and it's well on the way.
All right, thanks, sir. Chris Hawkins, you'll be last for this question.
I think most of the questions have been answered concerning the sewer plant with my friends on the South Side. The process to repair, fix, bring the sewer plant into the 21st century has been started. I can honestly say it probably should've been started a while, a while ago, but it just wasn't. But it's, we're on track with it now. The financing is, is there to maintain the plant, there's some monies available now with the credit line to make the initial repairs it takes to bring it up to a standard that's, that's show again. Our plant used to be a, a show plant, the students from Crowder would come and make a tour of it. That could happen again. I think we've got the right people on staff now that, that is on the ball with doing what's needed. It's the responsibility of the, of the council and the mayor to, to monitor these department heads, not micromanaging, but at least monitor, make sure that they're doing what they're saying they're doing. And I think that's, I think that's a step in the right direction, but as far as the sewer plant in, in Granby, it's, it's off to a really good start to recover.
All right, excellent. Okay, let's, let's shift gears a little bit here. I know that all of you, I see you all at City Council meetings, I know that you pay attention to what's going on in city government. I wonder, since you decided to run for office, or since you've been in office in your case, Mr. Hawkins, what's the most important thing that you've learned about city government? How it works, how it functions, how it doesn't function perhaps, however you want to go at it? And how will that affect how you would take on the next two years if you were to get elected? And Mr. Kelly will start with you.
Probably the most important thing that I've seen is, is stop the closed session. There's a lot of things you don't know that is in closed session. There's a lot of things that I'd like to stand up here and say, "Oh, I know all about that." No, don't. We're in a closed session. They don't have to tell you nothing, they ain't going to tell you nothing. Stop the closed sessions. Put it out in the public, let's all discuss it, let's talk about it. Another issue is, there's still a few people, and there's been some gone just recently, but there's still a few people that want to control so much stuff, they don't have control of it. It's a city. We all have control, or we all should have control. It needs to be run as a city. So I think number one is, get the personal feelings out of it. Run as a city, and quit the closed sessions, but let people know what's going on. They're keeping it from us. Let's stop it.
All right, thank you, sir. Ira, let's ask you the same question, we'll go to you next. The most important thing that you've learned about city government, I guess in your case, since you were elected, and how that would affect how the next two years would go for you?
You know, like, when I came into city government, my intentions were to try to bridge gaps that were there, and some, some of the strong wills that were present at the time. And it's, we've chopped away at some of that. The council works as, I work as one-fourth of the Alderman. I make my views known, I, I deliver whatever's passionate to me and debate those things in a, in a friendly way. I believe that the mayor, he represents the town, is part of the face of the town. The councilman represents the people, and he's, he has his ear to their, to what they need, what they desire, their complaints, their hurts, or their joys. And as, for the next two years, I hope to continue to do those things that would make Granby a place that people could read about and, and think good thoughts about, and say, "What's going on in Granby this time?" I think we can do that as a community, but it's a slow process, Chad, but it's, you've got to be diligent to stay, stay with it, stay at it.
All right, thank you. Bobby, we'll come to you, the same question, which is, what's the most important thing you've learned about city government since you decided to run, and how would that affect your two years on as an Alderman?
Well, I think it'll have a, one of the main things that I've learned is that if a dollar is spent in our city, how low is that dollar tracked in our city government? And I've found that, that during budget meetings, that the money isn't being tracked as well as it should be. And when a budget is being amended, we're spending money to amend that budget, and that is one of the main things that, that hit me like a brick, because I know former council has always had to amend budgets, and that shouldn't have to be if it's budgeted right for the first one. And this would help me to keep my attention on where our dollars are.
All right, excellent. Mr. Murphy will come to you, ask you the same question.
Biggest thing I have noticed, no one wants to take accountability or responsibility. I think that needs to change. If I'm elected, I make a mistake, I'm going to be man enough to tell you, "I made a mistake." The blame game don't work, we got to. We're all human, we make mistakes, let's get it fixed. Blame game, accountability, which in any form that you go to, it all comes back to the council as the final person. You've got department heads, council's supposed to be overseeing, but it still comes back. Accountability is on the, and the work together. Council has to learn to work together. Just so you shut down my idea, which I've seen in the past, people shoot one, "Well, you didn't vote for what I want." didn't vote for what I wanted. A lot of good ideals go by the wayside because they get personal feelings. And a good idea is a good idea no matter who.
All right. Mr. Farmer, you'll be the last guy on this question.
All right. So, since I've started running for council, I've learned something about something I already knew. There are people who will offer any one of you the moon just to get elected. And then they'll get in there and they'll just do their own thing. And so many people can't get to the meetings and they don't know what's happening. And so two years later, when those people are running, the citizens will ask the candidates, hey, why hasn't this stuff happened that we want done? Oh, well, I'm working on it. That's not the case. One thing I've learned since I've started running for council, started phoning meetings, there are a lot of people who really want stuff, to see stuff happen in meetings and really do not like what they see. So, looking forward, if elected, I would listen to the people. I will take your phone calls, talk to me at the restaurant, whatever, understand your complaints, and that will influence any decision I have on the council.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Murphy, we'll start with you this time. Let's go with this. As an alderman, you'd be responsible for setting city policy for the city and for its employees. Given that, what if any responsibility would you have as an alderman for overseeing the day-to-day business in the city?
On something like that, I would be aware of, I would go around and watch employees, not be at them, but keep an eye open and see who deserves the raises. Not that we can afford to give raises, but there's raises given and there are some raises given that shouldn't have been gave. It should be merit raises on all employees, should be a merit style raise. And I would want to see, like Jim, if they needed water boots or water hose, that they get stuff that they need would be one of my, I felt like one of my responsibilities. What the employees needed to do the job properly and be safe at doing it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Farmer, we'll go to you next. The question is, as an alderman, you're responsible for setting policy for the city and its employees. Given that, what if any responsibility do you have as an alderman for overseeing the city's day-to-day business?
Aldermen don't really have power outside the meeting, but I would certainly, ear to the ground, listen, see what is going on with the city employees themselves. I think most of the city departments can run themselves pretty efficiently. Travis has mentioned having monthly reports given in. I think that's a great idea. Just check up every once in a while, but don't micromanage. I don't want to tell anyone how to do their job, especially if I don't know how to do it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kelly, you'll be next.
All the questions that's been asked so far, I think that's probably the most important. We have to work together. I don't care who the mayor is, but work with them. Work with them, the other council members. We all, I myself am going to be more retired than some other guy, but on the same token, fit on the council, I would have a little bit more time maybe to put into that, into the investigation of, or to see how something is run or something is done. But not as a power play as somebody on the city, simply as somebody with the city to report back. And we all work together, all councilmen, mayor, we all should work together for the betterment of the town.
All right, excellent. Chris Hawkins, we'll give you a shout out.
Obviously, as a councilperson, you hold it in one spot. I don't believe that we should micromanage our leaders there, those that are department heads, although we need to, like one said, keep our ear to the ground, listen to what they have to say, understand their needs, their frustrations. As you meet, as a council or as a city government, then present those as an open body. We have good department heads, we have good employees, and at this point, good professionalism. As, the best thing that you can do for your employees is empower them so they can do a good job. One other thing is, not just the employees, but anybody that volunteers in Granby, the best thing you can do for a volunteer is empower them, give them encouragement and the needs, the means to do what they're, to get done what they need to do. Everybody that does something for Granby needs to feel like that they're making a difference in our community.
All right, excellent. Mr. Brooks, you'll be the last guy on this question.
I think all of our departments are running fairly well. And as an alderman, I would listen to concerns and the opinions that other citizens would have, you know, acquiring to our departments. And if there is a problem in our departments, I would want to figure out which is at the most prevalent to be taken care of. I'm a better listener than I am a speaker. Y'all may be able to tell, but I do listen to quite a few folks here in town. And I've worked here in this town for quite some time. And I do hear a lot of chatter. But I myself, I can get through this and I think we all can move forward.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Farmer, we'll start with you this time. Granby is in the process of hiring a new city clerk. There have been some budgetary and accountancy issues in the past few years. Will hiring a new city clerk solve all those issues? And if not, what's the next step for the city council to get those things correct?
I think hiring the new city clerk is going to help with a lot of those issues. Some of those have caused a lot of damage, but I think the thing that will help the issues the most is just time. We need more money to fix some of those things, and it's coming, but it's not going to be a short-term fix.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kelly, we'll ask you the same question.
I think the job the city clerk has is a very, very important job in a lot of aspects. And a lot of those aspects, we can't touch on at a meeting like this. But to say that the city council puts in the right city clerk, it's like sailing through the sea, it's going to come easier, it's going to come, it'll be nicer, it'll be easier to get along with, and everybody's going to be happier. And we need to put big value on the professionalism of the Granby city clerk.
All right, thank you. Chris Hawkins, same question to you.
The city clerk position is very important in the town. They are the chief overseer of our books and they monitor and keep track of our money, so to speak. They balance our books, balance our checkbook. A good clerk and word advertising for a good clerk, that shows professionalism, has up on all the necessary office ideas and professionalism will make things in the council go smoother. As a councilman, you depend on information that comes out of the office and out of the clerk's hands to make your decision on. If you tell me I have $100 and I need to spend $75, I find out that all I had was $50, that's not accurate information. You can't do a good job that way. But a good clerk that's on top of what she does will make those meetings go smoother and make the books more transparent, transparent so most all the townsfolk can understand what we do have and what we don't have.
All right, excellent. Mr. Brooks, same question to you, sir.
Could you repeat that question?
Sure. The city's in the process of hiring a new city clerk. Will hiring a new city clerk solve the city's budgetary and accountancy issues, or is there more that needs to be done? And if so, where do you go with that?
Well, I sure don't want to see us fall back in the same situation that we are in now. And I think cross-training needs to be done and it needs to be looked at. And, you know, when we do get our new city clerk, it's probably going to take her six months just to get adjusted to everything. So I suggest that during this six months, while she's training, let's train someone else in City Hall. That's it.
All right, excellent. Mr. Murphy, same for you, sir.
I do think the city clerk, the proper city clerk, could get us to that point. We've had issues in the past that the money's the bottom line. But yes, be able to handle and counsel a true and accurate money or finance deal, they ought to be able to work off that and smooth say. We have problems in the past and we have to take care of it. A budget up front or a city clerk that tells you, you have $500 on there, instead of, well, it might work, yeah, it will work with the right budgets.
Mr. Murphy, you can just stay there. We'll start with you. One more question, we'll go around. We've talked about some of the things that I think most of the folks here sort of knew were issues when they walked in the room, the sewer, the budget, those kinds of things. Is there an issue or a problem in the city that both the residents and the city council should be talking about now?
The way I look at that, there's quite a few level issues. Our main issue is our wastewater and our water and getting our town negativity to positive. I'm talking about newspapers, you know, everything. Every town has its issues. We can, as a council or as a city and as residents, we can overcome them. We just have to work together and have the right people in the right position to put the plan to work together.
All right, Murphy. Mr. Farmer, let's come to you. We'll ask the same question. An issue or a problem that the city isn't talking about that they should be?
I think when you live in a small town like what we do, if there was a real problem in the city, most people already know about it. I work in a place where information comes through quick. Gossip runs rampant. I don't really think there's a lot of big issue that citizens don't know about that the city's trying to keep secret, at least not with this council, maybe a couple councils ago. But, I mean, everyone's talking about the wastewater plant, everyone knows the feds came, everyone's talked about the community building. I think that definitely needs to be talked about. Someone in town probably has a great idea for what to do with it and just doesn't get out and talk about it. I don't think there's any issue really not being talked about, I just think there's not enough people talking about it to the council. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kelly, same question to you, sir.
I think probably the biggest thing that I'm in question of is this. And this information I'm going to give you can go in the paper, it can go to your next door neighbor, you can call the county clerk, whoever you want to call. Here's the numbers. The county clerk says Granby, Missouri has 1,548 registered voters in the city limits of Granby. Now ladies and gentlemen, Granby has 2,150 total population. Those numbers can't be. That's all I can say. Kay Ball is our county clerk. I'm not saying that she's done anything wrong. She's a very nice lady, she's been nothing but pleasant to me. But I say on the telephone, can't be, okay? Ain't no way. Okay, we adjust it. 1,337. Where did you get that number from? Well, we'll take off a couple hundred for nine. Okay? Folks, I'm telling you. Bobby Brooks and I was getting signatures to bring up a petition to get a state audit done. There's two ways to have a state audit. By petition, by order of the governor, that's it. The city council cannot meet and say, let's have a state audit done. Can't do it, against law. So we got the numbers, and the numbers that we were first told were, and I tend to believe this more, we had to have 25% of 850. I'll buy that. That wasn't an overnight success, but we did achieve that. And then they called us up and said, you ain't halfway there yet. Not so, folks. Here's the problem I have with this. You can tell it all you want, nobody gives a damn. There's where we are in the numbers. If you need to know anything about the registered voters in Granby, Missouri, call me, I'm an absolute professional. I've talked to state, county, I've talked to all of them, and I can tell you what they said. And they all don't speak the same language, by the way.
All right. Chris Hawkins, same question to you.
There's a couple of things that come to mind that is a conversation in town. Obviously, the community building and what's going to happen to it. My proposal is to fix it up, give it a facelift, make it usable and for the community. Travis has some ideas about some other things that he'll be able to talk about, but they didn't sound good. Most of the town is interested in what are we going to do here? What's for our kids? Where can we go? What can we do? They like to shop in town, if there's someplace to shop, they like to eat, if there's someplace to eat. The best thing that we could do as a council is at least make the coming to town and doing business easier and more comfortable. We probably are working in another town, probably. There are small businesses in town that people are working at, but most of the time working someplace else. But most people in town, they would like a comfortable town and they want no fighting in City Hall. And I plan to try to put together both.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brooks, you're the last guy on this one. Something, an issue or a problem in town, something that's not really being talked about that shouldn't be?
One of the problems I think is with our boards for like the baseball and the soccer boards. And I think they need to be looked over and better votes kept on that side so we know where that money is. And that's one of the issues that I've seen. So I don't know if anybody's been talking about it or not, but I think it should be addressed.
All right, excellent. Okay, we will, we're going to stop with the alderman candidates here for a little bit. We'll move on to our mayoral candidates. And of course, when we get to the end, if y'all have questions, you can ask them, whoever you are. So we'll start with our mayoral candidates. We'll start down here on my right with Mr. Gamble. And my opening question for you, sir, is if you're elected, what's the single most important thing that you'll do in the first 30 days of your administration? Introduce yourself by class.
I'm Travis Gamble, running for mayor, currently North Ward Alderman. To answer the question, probably the most important thing we face right now is the budget or the lack of. It crosses all departments. The sewer, the water, the sanitation, the all of them. The budget has been lacking for so long and its numbers just get transferred over that don't even mathematically compute. The first thing we've got to do is know what we've got to spend before we can start spending, before we can stand here and make promises that we're going to fix this, we're going to fix that, we're going to fix this. Before we can stand here and make promises that we're gonna fix this, we're gonna fix that, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna do it in the first year, or the first sixty days, or anything. We've gotta know what we've got. And it's gonna be a very long drawn out process, but not really. With the proper professional help, we can make this work. Uh, I think within the first thirty days, we need to do a, basically, a department for fund audit on everything. We've got some problems in departments right now that they're lacking that they shouldn't be, and some departments that were lacking extreme eight months ago that got fixed that quick. You don't fix a deficit that quick. Uh, I'm not saying anyone has taken money, that there's been any wrongness. I'm just, I know that we've been playing a shell game with money. And it hasn't been to the point that we're, it's been open to the aldermen or the mayor. I can say it hasn't been open to the aldermen. I don't know about the mayor, but I know I've been told on a very pertinent issue that it was paid, that's all you need to worry about. That's, that was an explanation to all the citizens. I was basically told to shut the hell up about it. That's wrong. Each and every one of them needs to know where every dime went. And with these audits that I think need to be done in the first thirty days, I want, it made sense. I want all of you to know what kind of shell game has been going on. But the budget is gonna be long and drawn out, and I wouldn't doubt it. We don't miss the fiscal year deadline. But we have got to know where we stand before we know where we can go. If there is a shortfall in departments, then we need to know why. If everyone's set to talk about the sewer, the reason the sewer has fell in disrepair, that it has, is because rates weren't raised, funding wasn't there, and no one seemed to care. Uh, it, it all comes back to the mayor and the aldermen not asking the right questions and not being diligent about getting the correct answers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hopper will come to you if you introduce yourself and tell us the most important thing you do in the first thirty days of your administration.
My name is Craig Hopper, and I'm the candidate for mayor. I would like to see all the department heads get along. I would have a meeting with the department heads to make sure that we're on the right track. Your city's been better than your department heads. Right now, we've got, the department heads have done a good job out at the sewer plant. They got the right man in there for the job. And like Travis said, you've gotta get a pledge. We need to get together and know exactly how much money we have and what we have to spend on the beach project. You can't run your house with a pledge. We, we can, I don't know, but it's hard. You gotta stay with whatever you got.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lynn sent the same question to you. Introduce yourself and tell us the most important thing you do in the first thirty days of your administration.
Okay, uh, I'm definitely an outsider. Uh, moved down here in July nineteen sixty-five with a seven-year-old child. What got me interested was hearing about what was going to be done with the community building. Uh, pretty well, I've seen, pretty well, most of Granby's heritage be torn up. And I think it's sort of weird that I'm still an outsider, definitely an outsider. And, uh, what gets me is that I have more respect for you guys' heritage than you guys do. Now, generally, Granby has been run off the rails for over twenty years. I remember, uh, it was a couple of days ago, it was what, twenty-eight years since me and Rox have been together? They built the sewer in nineteen eighty-eight. I remember, we had paid four hundred dollars to get dug and connected, whereas I had a whole bunch of old people living around there. Uh, moved to what was called the District of Summyville, you know, with all the rocks. You see houses with blocks in Grandview or the Ocho, Nelson Summy did it. Best place I've ever seen, the world's worst roofer, very bad plumber, but, in any case, uh, Granby has run off the rails for over twenty years. And the worst thing was the so-called animal police force. They got rid of Dewey Beaver, and they put in a bunch of animals and criminals. Uh, in July nineteen ninety-five, while Craig Hopper was there, I was beaten up by a handcuff by the Mexican chief of police named George Teller. About, oh, about a month or so later, he was beating up a relative of the Granby Police Board. Then he was, well, he was taping, he was taping the council clerk and the mayor, talking about fire. I'm sure that he got fired, he got five years, you know, then acted revolting, go to prison. I'd like to thank the current police chief, even though I nearly got arrested last month. But that's a problem here. And it's not just in Granby. I'm on a church around Kansas City. And you think Granby has problems, you have a silly mayor who's running things into the ground of population. So the curse all over. None of you have ever been locked up in a maximum security nut house. You think, you think that place, boy, is even worse than the nut house. And I need to go ahead and write about tearing up, you know, tearing up the big state, you know, hospitals and, hey, just put all the retards up in the old thing. Give them an extra bag of news, and they'll think it's just fine. But in any case, that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm an outsider. And as a result, I probably won't sign with any of you. I'll probably do my best to do what is best for Granby. There we go.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Hopper, we'll start with you this time. Uh, Granby's looking for a new city clerk. As the mayor, you're responsible for the day-to-day operation of the city. But in many cases, a lot of those duties fall to the city clerk because that person is at City Hall all the time, and the mayor's position is a part-time position. Given that, if you're the mayor, what's the most important skill that you're looking for in a new city clerk?
Contrary to popular belief, the city clerk does more to run the town than the mayor or council. They have, she's gonna have to be, or he will have to be very knowledgeable with the computer. They'll have to know QuickBooks, know how to make payroll. And I think they need to be very congenial. They, they work for the city, they work for the people. They need to be nice to you. They gotta be thick-skinned, very thick-skinned, don't be jolly.
All right. Mr. Gamble, same question to you, sir.
Well, I have different opinions, some with Mr. Hopper. Uh, the city clerk, any small city is only as good as their city clerk. But they need to realize who they work for, they need to realize who they take direction from. And I am entirely against micromanaging. But I don't like the fact that one of the city clerk, which is a hard position, basically takes precedence over the town. We, myself, are, we're elected officials. You people put your faith in us to make the right decision. I don't think that city clerk should be, uh, able to make decisions on the way bills are paid, whether or not paid. Like I said, the mayor's job is day-to-day operations, and that needs to be taken seriously. You can't run it with a hands-off approach. You can't run it with the making your own decisions on, as the mayor, on what's important, what's not. Everything's important. You need to be able to multitask. It is a part composition of it. But it's, uh, three hundred and sixty-five day, twenty-four hour day job. You can't just, it's not, two times a month and sit down there and vote on something and walk off and think you done something, because you don't. Every, you know, as the mayor, you're responsible for every citizen in this town, and their well-being. Making sure the gas is on, the sewer's working, the water's working, all that. The city clerk needs to be capable of good communication, good information, and to keep everyone informed. But we should not take it for granted that that information is a hundred percent correct all the time. Without keeping a constant, being vigilant and checking on it, you're setting yourself up for failure. Trust, but verify.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lynn sent the same question to you.
Could you repeat it?
Yes, sir. Uh, the city's looking for a new city clerk. As the mayor, you'd be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. Uh, in many cases, though, those duties actually fall to the city clerk. What's the most important skill you'd look for in a city clerk if you were the mayor?
Well, obviously, uh, the, I, I was, I was listening, I really tried to stay out of city politics after I got out of Nut House. Because I looked at it, it's not wise to crap where you have to live. But I came back because I preferred my community building. And I'm listening to this guy from Taylor Green, and I remember years ago, he had also been offering, this is playing, that this is the end of my contract. And for every year, for three years, I'm saying the same thing. You need to, I, I, I ate seven thousand dollars before, I'm gonna have to get you more money. I found out this had gone on for three years. It'd gone on for three years before that, and maybe it'd gone on before that. So, uh, Travis had, had a meeting, and I, uh, this lady over here says, "Well, you need to follow my call." And I pretty well said, "Hey, you only got two more meetings. If they're not late for the election, and, you know, count on the age of Aquaria where Jupiter rises over Uranus, you need to go ahead and get it done." And they did, like, the whole, we did it. Pretty much, you have pretty much what you're gonna have to, I'm not sure if it hiring you need particular person for however long. You're gonna have to find out how they worked out because they're on their good behavior when they're looking for the job. You're gonna have to find out how they get it, get it. Said before, this has not been going on for just one year. And I already said it hadn't been going on for just more than one year. It's been going on for three years, and then the ground has been going on for six years. We don't know how long it's been going on for then. It's not gonna be fixed. It may be, it's maybe not gonna be fixed with the first hire. But you're gonna have to go ahead and stay on to it at least for six, eight months, maybe even a year.
All right. Mr. Lynn, so you can just stay right there. I got, we'll start with you this time. This is a question that might be right up your alley. Uh, in January, the, the city council had a, a hearing to update the residents on the Tiff district. As part of that hearing, there was discussion of how to move forward with several projects, including the community building, the new maintenance barn. But since then, nothing's happened. We're two months down the road, and there's not been another word said. What would you do if you were the mayor to try to get the Tiff district moving forward?
Well, I was against the Tiff district. I thought it was just a power grab to let the stylists fill all day, you know, build the store, and have the citizens of Granby move into it. Shit, you know, if it's up to me, this is no Tiff district would, you know, it was, it was pretty well against, you know, I voted against it when I first came in. I, I'm not oppressed with it. Uh, generally, what I've seen is like with the Chester Building, I've seen it used to tear down Granby's heritage. And yes, I know that maybe there are problems. I mean, the same problem with that hub, that I got, I said, "Oh, no." I don't like the look of it. And then I thought, well, if I tear off the rocks, why, well, there ain't gonna be much left of the hub. So what you do is that I believe in keeping, you know, projects, I believe in fixing up. Fixing up the, the, uh, you know, the odd square. I'm not too crazy about the maintenance barn. I told the Three Stooges, uh, essentially, "Look, you guys could, if you, you know, while you're just sitting around here, you can go ahead and buy a whole bunch of cement blocks, you know, do the same thing." And he went, "Well, you wanna do that, you tell us this, do your business, how I run my hub." But in any case, I do think, I do think that it should be used for maintaining as much as possible what we have, fixing it up. I'm not sure if the money will be gone. Uh, happening supports Travis's idea of building something up because that means that if it's going to a building, you know, there won't be any more room for tearing down any more of Granby's heritage. So what happens is see where we are, and essentially look toward maintaining what we got. And then work on fixing up anything else that will maintain all the money.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hopper, the same question to you, sir.
I think that the, uh, Tiff board needs to get back on what they were set up to do. Uh, I don't know that they've done anything that was proposed when it was first set up. They were supposed to put new sidewalks in. The council done that on their own. Tiff board had nothing to do with it. But they need, they need to get back, we've got, what, six years left, that?
About five.
Five and a half, six years left. They need to get back and try to get done what it was set up to do. Whether we, we, people of council or mayor, could have any effect on that, I don't know. But I think we need to put some pressure on them to do what they were set up to do. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gamble, the same question to you.
I believe the, uh, Tiff in the last year has accomplished very, very little. At times, I think they look for distractions. I don't think it is, I'm not gonna pick on anybody, but when you're the chairman of a board, you're supposed to operate the board as a board. Not expect to have crutches to lean on where there'd be Mr. Gross that actually set the Tiff up. They don't have meetings hardly without, uh, "We've got five and a half years left, and we're gonna miss the vote." And there's several hundred thousand dollars that are gonna be used to benefit the city. But we drag our feet, and we drag our feet, and we talk about stuff until it, it's just talked up. Uh, the hearing, I thought, was a complete and total debauchery. I thought it was an insult to the citizens. I don't think people were listened to. And in reality, that meeting was a hearing that had to be held, had to be held. It wasn't so much that we wanted everyone's input, we have to hold one once every two years. And it had been longer than that since it had been held. I investigated. They had the meeting, it was just, I don't think the citizens' best interest are at hand here. And now I hear that, well, we've got this sewer thing to worry about, that community building's been up for a long damn time. That, that's, that's what we need to worry about, the sewer. I'm not worried about that. Well, it comes back, as I said, well, go multitask. We've got to do something. And we can let the community building sit there and fall in, but all we've got is to blame ourselves. I believe the council and the mayor has the option to reappoint and redo this Tiff board and get people in there that care and are looking out for the citizens' best interests and looking out for that money before it's gone. Because this is the only time we're gonna have this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hopper will, will come to you again. Uh, if things go as you would like them to go, two years from tonight, you'll be standing here again, asking people to reelect you as the mayor of Granby. Fair point. Tell me what will be different in two years with the city and the city government than what exists today if you're elected to mayor?
I hope there won't be as much controversy as it had, as there is right now. I hope the council can get together and work as four people working together. Mayor's no better than the council, but he's got the board. And I hope that in the next two years, we have more controversy with the mayor and the council.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gamble, I'll ask you the same question. If you're elected, how is the city gonna look better in two years?
In two years, we will be in our second year of having a legitimate budget. We will be at the end of a goal that will be set initially. The day I take office, I expect the aldermen and myself to get together and set a two-year goal for the city. To have quarterly meetings just like this, with citizens coming in to basically fill out our report card on what we're doing. I expect some goals to be set that are legitimate, that can be reached. And I expect constant input from not only the citizens, but the aldermen and the department heads. If you set a goal, and I want the department heads themselves to set a yearly goal, a two-year goal. If they have problems reaching it, whether it be personnel, financing, I wanna know that we've got to make the changes to get them there. If we just sit here and, "Whistle," it'll be okay. It's not gonna be okay, folks. It's not gonna be okay. It's not going to be okay. This town has been on autopilot too long. We've got to set goals and be reached, but they can't be reached sitting on your desk hoping for better days, because those better days are long gone. You've got to make them better days. Two years from now, I'd like to see infrastructure change. I'd like to see, and don't fool yourself on the sewer. We started out with these problems a year ago, a million dollars behind the eight ball on that sewer plan. So I don't want to say in five years, our financial woes will be over on that. They're not. That's going to be an ongoing process that will constantly cost the city of Granby money, but that is the cost of doing business. Two years from now, I will show you a different town, and it will be better, I promise.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lynn, that same question to you. If you're elected to mayor, in two years' time, you'd be standing in the same spot, presumably asking these folks to reelect you. How will the town, or its government, or and its government, look different in two years than it looks right now?
I agree about 60% of the time with Travis. It's just he wants to make it so wonderful here. I want it to essentially be governed well as it is. Generally, people over time have asked me, hey, why don't we, why don't I move to Granby? I said, no, move to East Newton County here because you'll stay away from here. Mr. Granby Farmer had somewhat of an idea. Granby is a cheap place to live here. The main thing that needs to be done, I was sort of annoyed to see somebody asking to move a trailer house on their own property, of all things. And that has caused quite a lot of trouble here. Ten years ago, I was arrested by a Granby, you know, Bashir, he's a crook. But anyway, I got thrown in jail because I got annoyed because they cut a special deal for Roxy's niece to move her trailer double wide in. I didn't have a problem until she tore down my chicken house right on the line. And I have, I have said, hey, look, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead because you do not keep the same rules for everybody else. You make new rules. Essentially, I believe that property rights come first. I believe that this place has potential. It's sort of like, what, Jacob, their mayor's sort of like moving into Mayberry, but not that, you know, not those, you know, I don't really want to bring in a whole bunch of undecideds, Mr. Garner's ideas to the contrary. Essentially, property rights come first, and rather, we're worst about making things so wonderful, you ought to go ahead and go back to basics and simply have Granby be well-run now.
All right, thank you. I want to try something a little different here for a minute. When you're a newspaper reporter, and you want to ask somebody kind of a smart alecky question, or a question that they might make offense to, you say, well, let me play devil's advocate. And if, and once you say that, it's kind of a free pass. You can basically ask them whatever you want. And nine times out of ten, they don't get too mad at you because, you know, they, they just give it a shot. So I was thinking of some devil's advocate questions that I could ask our mayoral candidates. And like all the rest of the questions, I don't know any of this is coming. So we'll start with Mr. Gamble down there on the.
Oh, all right.
All right, well, that's fine. My question to you, playing devil's advocate, is that by any measure that you'd like to use, Granby's city government has been a mess in the last year. There were budget problems. There've been sewer problems. There've been raids by federal agents. There's been non-payments of bills that shouldn't have been made. I don't mean to suggest that you are responsible for all of those things, or even any of those things, but I wonder, given the dysfunction of Granby's city government in the last year, how that should play into how people consider your candidacy to be the mayor?
That's a question, within a question. How does it play in?
Should it matter?
Well, if any of you have paid attention to Mr. Hayward's paper, or been to any council meetings, or seen any of the YouTube videos that Mr. Farmer's put online, you'll see that I probably won't be getting a Christmas card from the mayor next year. I have less than a grid. I believe that a city, a state, a country, a county only performs by following the laws of that state, county, city. You don't overlook them because, well, he's a good old boy. You don't overlook them because he's, well, he's doing a great job. He's been here for 20 years. You have to turn a blind eye to friendships, the family. You have to follow the law first, first and foremost. It's quite difficult, and I feel like I have paid a price for it. I've lost friends. I've not been, like I say, very popular at all with some of the members of the city government. And I don't apologize for it, because I feel like I'm doing the right thing. I have done my homework. I knew what the answer was before I asked the question. And I think everyone in this town deserves that justice. Do I feel responsible for it? Damn right, because I didn't fight hard enough. But I've done the best I could. I was outgunned, I was outmanned. I done all I could do, and I will continue to do all I can do. And I will honestly say, when my time in this political game is over, I want to be able to walk away with a clear conscience, knowing that I've done the right thing. And I'm known as a lot of things, but I'm always opinionated, but I won't lie to them, and I won't show favoritism regardless of what you read.
All right, I'm going to stop you there. Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Hopper, my devil's advocate question for you is this. You've served in many positions in the city. You've been the mayor before. Should voters look at your candidacy as a belief that we should return to the way that things were run when you were the mayor previously? And as a part of that question, how would Craig Hopper be a different mayor in 2015 than he was the first? Or wouldn't he be?
Well, I don't know whether he'd be a different mayor or not. I felt like I'd done a good job. What was the first part of your question?
The first part of the question is, should people look at your candidacy as a belief that things should go back to being run the way that they were run when you were the mayor?
I don't know where they should look at it. I think we should go back and live the way it was done 15, 20 years ago, that they can take what was done while I was in office, and it was, I had no complaints. I had a good council. I had a very good council. And that makes a difference.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lynn, my devil's advocate question for you is this. You've run for this office several times.
Oh, yeah.
But frankly, your candidacy always kind of feels like it's about something other than being the mayor of the city of Granby. Given that, and your often contentious relationship with the city, should people view you as a legitimate option to be the mayor of Granby?
Well, I don't know. And, you know, I'm sort of reminded of this painter wagon where, where here was this woman, she's the, she's the maid, and she's a, she's the second wife of this farmer, and the old woman says, Elizabeth, you don't know what you're going to get. She says, well, I know what I got. You know, and the old, the old laugh, and her head popped back in. I really liked the last year or so. I go ahead and meet the painter, and I say, oh, thank God, the young turks are fighting with the old tarbs here. Why, this is wonderful. Generally, generally, chances are, let me see, I looked at it, why, Craig got 40 votes here, I got six. Why, don't bother me a bit. I just have to worry about these four people voting for me other than Roxy here. You don't have to worry about it. Whereas Craig Hopper came in, why, shoot, we would have, you know, we would have people asking council court to write all the single time, and one of them went to the A circuit, where they ruled that federal judge doesn't have to obey the local rules of court. I thought it was hilarious in any case. Generally, I think that what most people in Granby want, most people I see, their last year was when they had that Tiff council meeting, and all these people are coming because they're scared that they are going to lose their inbuilt. So folks, if I can elect you, you have to worry about that. My job would be probably to have Granby run fairly well. The reason we have that 12 monthly sewer plan is no funds were allotted or taken. Essentially, Granby has been mismanaged for better than 20 years. And pretty well, my job would be to at least get things running to where they don't have to come to City Hall and worry that they, that they ain't going to be able to move their trailer into their own property. That, there won't be any problem with anything else. Generally, it's to go ahead and maintain, make things run well. However, not a great, you know, not.
All right, thank you, thank you. I appreciate your answers. I know that generally in these kind of things, it's a lot of broad questions, softballs, and I appreciate you taking a chance at a little more pointed question for me. Thank you very much. Okay, I have one more sort of general question, and then we'll open it up and take some questions from the audience. And I want to ask basically the same question. Mr. Lynn, we'll start with you. That we asked the alderman, we've talked some about the sewer and the budget and those kinds of things. Is there an issue, or something that you'd like to see done, or some sort of problem that we're not really talking about, that people ought to be considering, both the residents and the city government?
I've driven, I've driven on a number of things here. What I see, what I see, and this was a sort of tippie when they were doing the city council meeting, Roxy had to use the bathroom. I walked by, I walked by the auditorium, and I seen a whole bunch of about 15, 20 little girls, well, 13, 14, whatever, little girls, they were having the time of their life playing basketball. They didn't know what they needed, $700,000 to fix up the odd corner. What, what any town wants to do here, I see demographic decline. You know, if you go through a bunch of these small towns, like the one I bought this church in around Kansas City, you go through all these towns, what you see is you see demographic decline. I have bought a number of properties cheap because the old people died, and their children and grandchildren did not want to live in Granby. What you want to do is you want to make this town, not that it's well-run, but you want to make it to where your children, your grandchildren want to not go somewhere else to make a living. They want to, as soon as they are able to, to come back here and live. And that is, that is pretty well what I think is the thing here, and not the one I want to have actually mentioned that is Andrew, is Andrew Farmer over here. So I give him credit for going ahead and looking at that. That's pretty well the main thing, is overcome the demographic decline by making it easy and well to live here, you know, from your birth to your maturity.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Gamble, we'll bring the same thing to you. An issue or a problem, something that the city's not considering that perhaps they should be?
I can't put my finger on any one thing. I think that there are, I said, made myself a list of 10 hot topics today. None are one more important than the other. I think all these issues need to be taken with the same serious tone. They all need to be worked through. But we're going to have to do, it's going to be like playing a lot of games at once. But if elected mayor, I might not be real popular with the alderman in one aspect, it's where I want to see progress. And I want to see, everyone wants a drive-through world where you've got it like that. It's not going to happen that quick, but we need to get the right people to the right places, address several issues at once, and not just, well, we're going to worry about the sewer, now we're going to worry about this. We need to start projects, work them through, everyone working together. That's what we're elected to do, is to work these problems out so you can rely on it. But I think there's entirely too much time and effort put into a single issue. And this last year, it doesn't seem like it was a month ago, I was standing right here trying to get elected as alderman. And we have wasted a year on nothing but nonsense and zero leadership. And the, the board of aldermen has been at each other's throats, but it's because there was no, I hate to use this term, but adult supervision to step in and say, we're going to get along, and we were elected to run this town, now let's run it. But there can't be any single agenda. Every issue's important, and everyone together must work together, and everyone is important together.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Hopper, the same question to you. An issue or a problem, a project, something that the people aren't talking about that perhaps they should be?
No, I don't have any specific issue. I think the ones we've talked about here tonight is really the most important thing that we've got to work on.
All right, thank you. All right, before we get to your questions, we'll do that in just one minute, I wanted to pause for one second. Sharon is our city collector. In January, she was running unopposed, and now she finds herself not running unopposed. And I wanted to give her the chance to come up and introduce herself, and give her, give her a quick campaign spiel to y'all, and I'd ask her to do that now. Thank you, Mr. Gamble.
I'm Sharon Stevenson. I have been Granby city collector for 10 years now. Like Travis said, I was unopposed. I have been opposed for quite a while. Didn't even know that I was going to have somebody that was going to run against me until just all of a sudden. So I didn't feel like there was any need to really rush around and get flyers out and, you know, banners and everything, but I have. And I appreciate everything that the city does for me, that you trust me enough to take care of things for all of you. I will do my very best, as I have been, and I, I hope I continue to do that for you. The number one big priority for me is the people. You have to treat your people, your customers, right. If you don't treat them right, forget it. You don't, you don't have anything with the town, with the city, or anything. You just need to, if they have issues, if they call the city and say, you know, why wasn't my, why wasn't my trash picked up today? Your answer is not, well, I don't know, I wasn't on the trash truck today, you know? You try to help that person. You try to help them. You may not have their right answer they're looking for, but you do try to help them. Some other issues, you know, it's all, it's always been, well, I don't know, I wasn't there today. Well, I don't know, I wasn't meeting your reading today, you know? But still, try to help that customer. Let them know that, that that's your job. You want to help your customers. You want them to be satisfied with you and your, and your knowledge and your presence. And I, I hope all of you will trust me enough to vote for me again this year. I really, really appreciate it, and I love every one of you. Thank you.
Sharon, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for being here, I appreciate it. All right, questions? Who has a question? Anybody has a question? All right, we'll start, I'll bring you the mic out here so they can hear what you're saying.
Y'all been up in the group? I was, I was on the city council the entire year, over 30 years ago. Sitting here, this is the best of the problems going on today. Same problems I've had with 30 years ago. Same issue. The evidence isn't enough, sir. It's been like a roadie, one chancellor, one mayor, one, a hot topic of the day, it's what is wrong today, and somebody's biting anybody. If it's the streets, if they've been juggling, and I'm asking the streets, if it's a certain way they're handling it, the sky's falling, they got it, it's deserved. And channel, and then, you're after you. Why is it that way? I think that the biggest reason, a small town like this. I think that the biggest reason, a small town like this, should, can't afford city management, and are in between, are in between, then, had a lot of investment with gas, water, sewer, asking about. It is a big, it's a lot of money, it's a lot.
Well, Peter, he's had an interesting point, and I'll let any of you, if anyone takes a shot at it. How do y'all, as Alderman or as mayor, take the city from being a reactive organization, there's holes in the road, sewer is broken, whatever, to being a proactive organization? The next step to make Granby better is to build a walking trail at the, at the baseball field. The next step is to go a new community building at the, at the park. The next step is to buy a new fire truck, I don't know, whatever the, the next step to make things better as opposed to fixing what the, what the, yesterday's problem or today's problem is. How do you make that switch? So Travis, you can take a shot at that?
You bet. First of all, it takes money. You've got to run a city like business. When you prosper, you have the money to afford to, for instance, if you're gonna pave the streets, okay, first you should look at the utilities that are under the streets. If you're gonna spend a couple hundred thousand dollars fixing a street, make sure the utilities that go under it are in good shape. Plan ahead. Don't just need your, we need to fix this street, knowing you might have issues under that street. So then you go out and spend a couple hundred thousand dollars, like we've had to do for years, and then you go in there and find out you've got an aging water line that ruptures. And it will always do it the next day. So then you've got a big cut in the street that you can pull over for the next five years till you get around to it again. You've got to plan ahead. If you want to do a walking trail, start planning for it now. Tell the people what you're doing. Get them informed, like I say with these quarterly meetings and stuff, tell them what you're working towards, but you've got to have the money to do it. And the money's not gonna fall out of the sky. It comes back with the budget. Budget, utility rate, if we would have raised utility rates at, at the rate of everything else that has went up, the city'd be in great shape. Too many people over the years have based their election on, I'm not gonna raise rates. Well, it's necessary. It is. When you go to the grocery store, a bag of chips costs a lot more than it did two years ago or five years ago. A gallon of gas costs a lot more than it didn't. And I know there's a lot of people on fixed incomes, and I don't want to impact a lot of them, but what people need to realize is the city's lifeblood comes from, and these improvements come from only one source, and that's our utilities and taxes. And we cannot provide a modern utilities, streets, anything, when we're living in nineteen seventy rates. We can't do it. And as far as what's been brought up here tonight, Granby's a cheap place to live. I've learned in my years in business, it doesn't always pay to be the cheapest. Because your, your, what you offer suffers from being cheap. You need to be competitive. You don't want to be the highest, but you have to look at, at the bottom line is, you can't just come out flush every month. You've got to have a service to be able to do these improvements.
Somebody else want to take a shot at that? Sure.
It's probably the mayor question.
No, 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 I think, I mean, Alderman set the, set the policy.
They, you know, your department heads have short-term and long-term visions for the town and their, and their departments. A mayor that, and, and council that works with the department heads, understanding what those things are, then you can begin to budget for those things, short-term and those things long-term. You should be able to see a, a change in your town or in your infrastructure ten years down the road because you've listened to a department head, whether it be in the utilities, whether it be in the police department, fire department, wastewater plant, in the, in the office. If you listen to what they say, and not take their ideas upon up to them in the trash, you'll, you'll be able to pre-plan for that, for that goal that is long-term and the short-term ones together. But it takes listening to what they're saying.
All right. Somebody else want to take a shot? All right, we're gonna come back in a minute.
My question was, how do you optimize the system like Granby has? To keep the trash truck in the gray part, keep the sewer system in million dollars behind? Well, while you're fixing the water system here, blocking it in the van, next thing over the week, I'll be the water system supervisor, you know, the councilor. You have something where you're just laying all pieces. Say, well, you know, you got a department manager, you got a division, you got a division that you got, that's good. But somebody has to take it, really realize that the water pipes are running in the van, and if you're aware of the nasty, you're finding the fixing that, not wait till the system goes down, not wait till the sewer system goes down. Somebody's not listening, or somebody's not letting you know. Want to be up, need to find out that sometime, in place, something in place, little monitor your systems that you have, water, gas, surge, monitor everything you got going. Don't let it, the whole hell, before you start to fix it, then it's a process. We just go with it. One thing I've never had with the sewer system here, we need to stop, wait, that'd be my way to do it?
Did you all catch that? What can we put in place to stop this, this roller coaster, this waiting on the next disaster thing to come along before we fix it?
Well, last, last year, I started reading your papers because you had some intriguing headlines, so I went ahead and bought, now I got some straight into it. The last year has pretty well been rather illuminated because it seemed like everything started coming at once here. I, I found out that, I remember when the sewer came in, nineteen eighty-eight. Granby's the largest town Missouri without a wastewater system. And people got down on Barry Flint. I would get down on him too, but he, well, I paid three times as much as I did to put it in, you know, for the water mill, the sewer, the dam, three times, that's it. What I, I found out is that for all practical purposes, they didn't treat all these capital improvements as essentially something that is going to, you know, has to be taken care of. Capital improvements have to be taken care of because everything that caves if you don't take care of it here. And so, yes, we have to get a budget, we have to get a budget, we have to get the thing, system well-run here. And generally, you know, I don't, it's, it's like driving a big truck here. You don't want to do things quickly, you want to conserve momentum. And what you want to do is you want to get things on and even keel. Before you bring up any new projects here, you need to make sure the older ones are maintained. And essentially, that's what hasn't been done with the sewer plan. So now, Granby is under the gun. Hopefully, they'll say, no, we can't, as you say, no, we don't want to run the sewer system. No, state, state doesn't want to run the sewer system. Most of the time, what they're looking for is, I guess, to have adult supervision over to where they don't have to come in and then they have to maintain, because they don't really want to do too much here. So generally, getting on a key keel essentially is what I think, and is what I think, what it hurts if you don't, then maybe when we have certain customers, they'll add this much.
Okay. We can have a couple of questions going on. One second. Do you have any suggestions to help stop this?
Public issues, I think Granby, Granby can force a reaction. Something that could be a settlement there for a professional, which you could look at, play a thirty yards free. One, lack of a water system, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a problem.
But I think that doesn't make, but if you do gas system, you know, you know where everyone is gonna care.
Right, right. That's, that's one of the things that takes suggestions from your thinking.
You've been, the rest of you, kind of a couple of questions going. One is how you move from being reactive to proactive, the other is what you do to sort of keep this roller coaster, you're still the latest problem, and what we can fix it. Like take a shot.
I have, I have quote, good news and bad news for you. Here's a good one. There's always gonna be a fix. You can fix it. Our predecessor's fixed it. Joanne, I heard you said at city council tonight, was talking about the sewer fund. You said, well, I bet that officer was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that sewer fund. And that come back then, now there's nothing. But then they said, no, it's fine. So then they spent, or they don't, made a mistake, wasn't fine. What I'm saying is, they had it fixed. Some, it's just tracking, it goes up, it goes down. There's always gonna be something wrong. That's why we're, trash truck won't work for four seconds. Ain't gonna happen. Somebody's gonna quit, so we have to maintain, find that balance. There's X amount of dollars that goes in the sewer fund every month, supposedly. X amount of dollars, you've got to wait for it, and we spend it on other things. Problem is, then you get into the technical part of what Travis was trying to say. Where to go? Show me the enemy. Where does that at? That's where you're gonna look at a possible state office. A state office more of why you did it than it is where does the money go? Do you have checks that are worth plenty of? There's always gonna be problems, a lot of issues you have to have. Diligent people on staff taking care of it, mostly on a daily basis, to keep those problems fixed.
Anybody else want to make a shot at that? All right, Travis, somebody else have a question? Uh, you go ahead.
I, I actually can, sorry, you're in it. On the quote, Terry said, as far as engineers and stuff, yeah, let's get out there. But in the past, just the way it was treated, in the last ten years, we paid two water tanks. One was done, that's the dump. Here it is, here's the problems. Okay, thanks. A few, over a year ago, there was nothing, government funding available to pay for a little crap. Oh, let's jump on both. So we did. They brought it back, I saw a copy of, of over fifty percent of it, it was incorrect. They were giving incorrect information because it didn't go to the department head or the guy that knew what was going on with the water system. They went to City Hall and started asking questions about water. The answers they gave were crossed up with our gas and our water system, because the people that were answering the question didn't know what the answers were. So we wish at that point, we still have a lot of privacy on it. It's been, this was voted on before I took office. We're not hitting a park survey on L.A. It's granted.
It's three years.
Yeah. So, so here we go. We, we blow money, console, that, and when it comes, unless there's a complete and total rear end changing of the garden, and people look at it and take it from what it says and do what it said, and make a plan to do that, then it's gonna be more waste paper. And I've seen that in my office where I was down in the corner years, but that's the way it looks for all that. And I come back and it's basically the same message. If you're gonna pay somebody to give you an expert opinion, listen to them and make a plan to do it, or why not? We do it again and again in city terms and everything else, you know? If you already know what you're doing, why are we paying to you and pressing? We don't know what we're doing on ours. If they pay an expert to listen, no problem.
All right, let's jump here for a bit, should I answer your question?
Actually, I have a, we'll help with the devil's advocate question for Sharon. And I want to preface this by saying, I support your, your run, you gave my vote, but I do have a list of questions for you. In previous council meetings leading up to this point, you've talked about the need for our city to be ran more efficiently. And I had even spoken out, not necessarily against you, but against the idea of, say, you keeping track of your transactions in a ledger book, and then somebody coming behind later and transferring it into QuickBooks. So my question for you is this, what are you doing to improve your skills as a city employee? I know you aren't like official, but as a worker in that office, are you currently seeking training? Are you, what are you doing to improve who you are as a city employee?
All right, we'll answer that. I'll bring in Mike here.
The answer to your question is, I'm always kept a ledger. I don't know if anybody agrees with that, but to me, that's something to fall back on. If, if I, I am doing QuickBooks, I am getting all of my stuff, get QuickBooks already. I just worked it not, not too long ago, but I felt that that's something I needed to do. And hopefully, we will be trained, maybe if we just, city park in there that can help us more as we go, that would be good. I have called every college or area to see if we can get that training class for the QuickBooks. And that says he was the only one right now that's offering it, it's a two-day day training, which we cannot do there. I asked them why, they were just doing the day training, they said because a lot of employees didn't want to take the money to pay overtime for the ability in classes. So that was out. They said they may offer some more classes, private college, middle road, in the ball, and it could be some minor classes. But I'm doing everything I can to, to, to see that the things are getting what I need to be, you know, QuickBooks in it, computers. I'm just doing this right here.
All right, thank you both. More questions? Somebody else have a question they want to ask? Now's your time, Ms. Man, I'll come to you.
Tonight, I heard several of you that want to make the councilman work together, the city council and the mayor, or make it a law. Let me pose this to you. If there wasn't a person in the city council that looked into things, stirred you up, would we have fired the man that wasn't doing his job at the school?
Didn't fire.
Everybody would have said, this little boy is a bad. Would we have found out that we had the problems we had?
No, he quit before we knew. He quit before we knew. He knew, he knew the traffic record was coming, so he quit.
Right. But you don't, you don't always have to say, I wanna run and I wanna be a councilor, so everybody get along. I don't exactly want everybody to get along because something wrong in the city, I want the person to find out what's wrong, bring it to the city council, bring it to the mayor, and say, this is wrong, we've got to fix it. Even if it's gonna stir you people up, I don't want to dare to say that. And I heard tonight several times, people out there want to get elected, pray they're ready. I'm just trying to make the point that sometimes not getting wrong gets used to. Do you agree?
Oh, you've never, you've never heard these say I want to get along?
Honey, you can't, honey.
Your husband invented that.
Yeah.
Well, okay, well, let's put this just slightly different way. How do you balance the desire to make the city work, make the city function, everybody to, to get along and be moving in the same direction, with the idea that you have to, at some point as an elected official, say what you think and make your position known and, and have, and even if, if the, if the other four people that sit up there on that dice don't like it, you still have some, do you have some obligation to say what you think regardless of the others? And how do you balance that? And how do you balance that, that, uh, sort of combativeness maybe with the idea of moving the city?
Very good.
Who wants to take a shot at that? Somebody?
Oh, I would.
Oh, would you?
Oh, I knew that well.
I had my suspicions at work.
Well, the guy that said, can we just all get along? Apparently, they're gonna deal with much bigger. Can we all get along? I'm not looking to marry in the world, okay? What we didn't realize, people are applying, is that it's our job to achieve a goal. To agree to disagree, act like adults, not pout, not jump up and start telling everybody, I'm the mayor or I'm the ultimate quarter. Be grownups, conduct yourself professionally. I know there have been times that I've left here myself, and I probably I didn't conduct myself professionally. But if there's an issue, there is a common ground. The whole thing to realize, this isn't about us. This isn't about egos. This isn't about who's right, who's wrong. Who won? Whenever the council and the mayor fail, the city fails. And if you are naive enough to come in there with a personal agenda, and I'm always right, and I'm not gonna listen to anybody else, by God, this is the way it's gonna be. This is my job. I have accepted and accept failure in things I felt very strongly about. But when I left there, you tell me. You need to take the next issue up and try to solve. Regardless of what's been spoken of me. I don't have a minute. That's childish. Anyone that says that has their own. You can say whatever you like about me. I was elected to help people and help run the city. I don't care who you are or what you are. All of you deserve the same treatment. And I'm gonna pick someone I personally, uh, and it's, it's stupid, it's childish if you bring that to the table. No, we're not all together. And if someone's, the, I have more respect for somebody that stands up to me and argues for it than somebody that sits there and goes along just to get away. Or changes their tune from what they say in session to what they tell everyone else. And I'm gonna be long with you. That's why it's very important for citizens to counter the council meetings. And I appreciate what's in print. I know that you were just telling one time you were, what was wrong with print?
That's true.
But the honesty, the truth will always come out. And I will not say anything to any of you or to me that I would stand on. Right or wrong, I said it all I know. And if everyone else had that same power, the town would be a better place. Because I'm not gonna agree with everybody all the time. And they're not gonna agree with me. But you gotta stand for what you mean. But then it's all about give and take. And you get on.
Ms. Parker, how about you? The, the, this idea of balancing your own personal convictions or your own personal thoughts with, which if they go along, they'll go along with what the rest of the group have said.
I had a councilperson ask me one time. She, she didn't agree with everything going on in council meeting. She voted against everybody getting along. She asked me, she said, do I make you mad? And I said, no. And I said, no. Don't you vote me in your condition. All there is to work here. If I think somebody gets you, puts an idea in your head before you come to this meeting, I might say so. I would approve, practice, and never go to agree a hundred percent of the time. That's one of the four people. If, if everybody will agree, just hold it together.
All right. How about you, Ms. Winston? You wanna take a shot at this? I suspect you won't have much probability in saying anything regardless of what's going on.
This gentleman asked, why do fighters a number of these ups and downs? Well, the reason that I think we have more people these years through South Ward is because, obviously, things have gotten worse very well at all. I was a lawyer at Travis waiting for my court, had a mess. When I found the court had lined up, I almost did not win, right? Like I call on my webpage. But generally, generally, you have to, generally, what, what I think is be done is that most of the time, perfect against people coming to the city council meetings, just like they have the same point, coming to political rallies. And I've seen, at one time, I first ran in nineteen ninety-four, there was none of politicians there. And then you come these two old people, the politician just mauled, like there were two votes or something like that. What, what has, what has happened? My, my main experience here is first, we need to take care of what we got before, before we can go ahead and worry about making this place so wonderful. I kind of want this place to wonder if we got a whole bunch of people like this, wanting to come to take, you know, wanting to keep things where it is. And you can't worry, you know, if you have conviction or if you have desire to take things, you cannot worry about those who you are going to upset, wanting to keep you the old way or wanting to go ahead and make something better. You know, I, I'm very macho here. All you want to do is just make sure that about fifty-one or sixty percent of the population think they're doing a good, tough job in the election. That's what we have there. Yes, this last year, that you have, well, mostly that too. Essentially, I think that once there is some sort of change, at least some sort of change, it will, oh, yeah, it better, it probably goes that for the city plan for everything else here. You have to, you have to go ahead and set a high enough rate of, of that where the whole property is used to maintain the system, or just like you.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a shot at that? This idea of balancing your own, sort of your convictions, even if they're a little contrary with the, the idea of trying to work in as a unit?
What you have, what you, what you look for in a, in a counselor are free thinker, those that think for themselves. Now, basically, just run the group. In the council, at least right now, Travis and I, we agree on something, we disagree on something. But we have passion. We try to sell an idea or a thought to the other one. You have to have passion. You have to be a free thinker. But when you believe the meaning, you make your vote. You should be as friends as you was when you started. The trouble is, is we have assumed that because you vote contrary, that you're an enemy. Well, that's not the truth at all. You have to have passion. You have to try to sell your passion to those others on the council, and you need their vote to come your way. And you need to try to sell it to everything that you have, and bring your paperwork, bring yours from study, and, uh, and try to sell that. That's, sometimes, uh, message trumpet is as an argument. It's, it's not. It, like, our friend here said, it's, you have to have that. You can't just skate along. Everybody just, just trying to be nice with the other. There is common courtesy and respect. But you have to, you have to have a passion, what you believe in, kind of stuff.
All right. Uh, anybody else want to?
I have a question. Uh, and I'd like to address it specifically, uh, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Farmer, Mr. Kelly. If either of you, any of you gentlemen work to get away, you're gonna find yourself sitting on the opposite side where you normally sit and sit for. And it's easy to sit in the back row or over there in the corner where I sit and say, well, if I was you, I'd do this, or I'd do that, or I'd go this way, or I'd tell them, well, you know, I'm not doing this, that, or the other thing anymore, or I'm doing it. It's a different world. And I think Mr. Daniel, Mr. Hawkins would agree with me when you sit in that chair then and you're looking out at everybody. And so I wonder, uh, how you would prepare yourself, or how you have to prepare yourself for this idea that people you know, uh, for years, in some cases, most of your life, are, if you get elected, or within a few weeks are gonna be, uh, they're in your ear. They're not happy. How do you vote? They're not happy with, with, with what's going on. They're not happy with some issue they have. And at some point, eventually, you can't tell everybody yes. You're gonna tell somebody no. You're gonna vote a way they don't like. You're gonna, you're gonna say something the way they don't like. This is gonna move in a direction they don't like. And how do you prepare yourself to be in that position, to take that role, and sort of put yourself, uh, in this place where now people all have their opinion of what you've done or what you've done? Mr. Brooks, you take a shot at that first? Do you think it'll be different sitting on the, on the other side of the, the council?
Oh, absolutely. Well, because, you know, the packets that they get every, every week and stuff. Uh, when we sat out there, they've already, the council was already bred up on the situations. And, uh, uh, trying to get that, there's, uh, there's a little difference. And I have already been asked about certain people that has lost their job. And I was for that, for the end. And at first, I was an innocent because it just didn't settle right. Because I was on the outside looking in. But once I started to look on the inside, and, uh, my opinion was starting to change because I was more educated and the knowledge was brought to me. And then I said, well, then, you know, there's gotta be a change. So.
All right. Mr. Murphy, how about you? Your guy has a lot of connections in this town. A lot of people know you. How's that gonna, how's that gonna affect?
I think it will be actually easier for me. Everyone can be a funny quarterback. If I have the facts on my mind, my decision is gonna be based on all the facts I give. So except in the audience, I'm not getting all the facts. I will have, hopefully, all the facts. And you're not gonna make everybody happy. I understand that. And a lot of people know me. I'm real open and honest. I want the transparency. That way, the people in the audience, I've said their lie, thought, where did they come from? You know, that I only had half the information. So I think it'll be easier to make convictions stick with us when I have all the facts than just partial facts as a public, uh, a public. That's why we want to see the transparency. That way, people would understand why I meant my, why I voted, because they have the same facts I have instead of partial.
All right. Excellent. How about you, Ms. Parker? Take a shot at this question?
Well, I'd like to thank, for the most part, I can keep up on city events and know most of what happened. I'm sure there's a lot that does that I'm not aware of. But what I, I like to think of myself as an honest person. If someone comes to me with a problem and I have to tell them no, I will try to tell them to the best of my ability, my point of view, and why I disagree with what they say. If that's not a good enough form, that's out of my hands at that point. I can't do any better. If I end up, even if I get elected and then end up losing the next election and everybody in the town hates me, that's fine, as long as I left the town a better place than what I am.
All right.
Mr. Kelly? Uh, I would like to answer that question with the, with, with the question, actually. Your question was?
Uh, no question.
Mr. Hawkins, we use, with him, I'm a good one on the council. And, uh, and Mr. Daniel, we do it out of our own mind on the council, out of that. I think they've absolutely been brilliant. I think they've done right. I think they've stood up on camera. And I mean that sincerely, for my heart. And I don't think it would be a problem whatsoever if, uh, you tell them the truth. Now, I'll say you are, but if I say the truth, I don't have to admit what I said.
That's true, son.
Those guys have done a brilliant job with that. And I know they have made everybody totally happy. I mean, we've been, I've been voting for both these guys. And I love them both. And they stand out and I, I put them to them. You say, yeah, I, I bet, sure. We can do that.
All right. Thank you. Other question? Ms. Mary?
This is really for Captain Myra. Uh, I understand you have a lot of work to get the sewer fixed and everything. Have you started on that process? Are we getting any results from the federal government and the, you, uh... Anyway, the people that are, I miss out. Are you getting, uh, on the way to getting those things fixed? I mean, are they coming back and saying, okay, you did a good job? Are you getting any feedback? Or do you have the right to say that? Uh, you are getting some feedback to get the sewer fixed?
What I can't say. The, uh, credit is not included. It's an negative one. Because of the hallucination of our current clarity, I can't tell you everything that I should know. Want to ask, I would go with that. Uh, that was, uh, the medium involved with the city. It's my understanding of what I was told, what I was guaranteed, is the money is there to invest in the automation progress. But I know if you guys have ever heard of Terrence, that not one cat, but it's a thousand little cats that killed. Well, that's what we're suffering with this. The system had been letting you get such different hair that every time you think you're getting on, you fix five things and then eight won't show up. We had generators, we had lift home stations that are down. We fixed a generator, we didn't spend five grand on it, and then, uh, two thousand dollars started to run it. And then we got down and fixed it, and half the problem was this ass job that shouldn't have been here before, because of what's all the problems. Uh, a lift station, it was making so much noise because it's automatic, we go and wire around the circuit. So it's set there come to time. None of us said we brought anything on the test. It was, it sure hasn't been on my watch.
So has it been brought to your attention now?
Since we got a new operator, yes. All I heard was the previous operators, that everything was going very well. The tests were great, everything was fine. I'm worried about the break job, blah, 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 blah. Since then, I mean, we have, in all, we have a distraction service. Uh, we've got an operator up at a lot of places. But nevertheless, it's the mayor and council's job to dig in there and find out these things for me. And to know. And I was alarmed the day after I was standing in the office on the sewer plant. And I told everyone what I saw. So we've got to stay vigilant. You can trust your employees, and you don't have to stand there and watch them do it. But, you know, you can kind of tell if things are not working. But the, the problem we're having right now is every time you take two steps forward and one step back, we're getting, and we're gonna get them. But it's, you know, it would be foolish to stand there and give everyone a estimate on when this thing's gonna be fixed. Because it's got more than one move apart on it. Something's running out of cost. And we've left ninety percent of the system, but we've had, uh, an INI issue basically groundwater seeping system for years and been dealt with. Never been addressed. This, this deal is, is gonna be a constant problem for a long time. But we can't, you know, basically, folks that are on these issues, our job, the job of the mayor and all, is going to be operate that plant within state regulations and federal regulations, and make sure that the tests are here, and we're good, whether it's state or local. And that's all we can do is stand in line and say, oh, we got this all fixed. No, we, sooner or later, we're gonna get a report from the N.R. E.P.A. And it's done. But we can step into this. And it's gonna hurt, but we can step into this. A lot of the problems that this is all gonna worry about, because we don't know what happened. Uh, we are making progress, I think we're making good progress. But we've also gotta look at affordability. But we've also got to look at affordability and if we can't go through this, our top, uh, deal, we'll probably end up with our, our office wondering for the next one. We've got to slow steady, stay on purpose.
When was the last time you heard of the sewer?
We could go some, you know, two-
When was the last time you heard about it?
I would never, right.
And I've talked to Victor about twice, but he calls me or I call him, we just check in and this is going on and that's going on. Uh, I think myself and our, uh, good communication with him. Uh, and that's what it takes. And I've been criticized for hanging around the city bar. That's what you find out if there's problems. It's something, you know, picking a favor or anything. You're not going to know what's going on with the city by going on such an easy share. I've heard about it in Chad's paper or at the council. If you want to know what's going on, go over it. It's happening.
Just to add to what perhaps he said, all the truth. Basically, the best thing we can do is, is put the right people, the right spot on that project with, uh, with Victor and with Gene Siders. Uh, he gave us a list of things that we should start building and lift that by credit. We're starting to do those projects. So we're at least pointing in the right direction. We want to make sure that everybody, granted, the flesh is through, it goes to the right spot.
I don't mind your work very well. Thank you.
All right. Well, question, do you have a question?
I want to ask Mommy something.
All right, I'll, I'll-
You said that, you said that you, you were sitting different here and then you got more information. Uh, is there some information which you go and ask the, uh, councilman or how, how does, how does outside? So I, I know if you're, you're, what, closed meeting, you're not supposed to say anything out of, you know, outside that year, but-
I, I'd like to point out that there's, as I said before, there's nothing in the sunshine law that says they can't come out and say whatever they want. And there's nothing in the sunshine law that says that they have to talk about things behind closed doors. That doesn't mean that they necessarily should come out and say everything, but they don't, anyway.
Is there any, you know, anyway, you're not getting to see the council to tell, okay, there's something Senator Mountain Dog for the, for the, uh, what, to fix up the auditorium. I wanted to ask, uh, when we have the mayor, why can't you, why do you spend three hundred thousand dollars for how much, three thousand dollars for sprinkler system and just simply pass the audit that no more than two hundred and ninety-nine to get you there? I was cut off, you know, cut off, and that's the question. Generally, generally, is there any process? You know, I mean, I, I, I'm sort of thinking about maybe having a grant city, maybe web page. You would buy, you'd buy them for one, five, six, seven, eight dollars a month, stuff like that, where anybody wants to log in Kendall, we're trying out about, you know, what these pumps are rather than having real all of a sudden, you know, this is it. So, now, this one goes to me. Who said that he has found out something that's just going to break for the councilman? Essentially, it seems like rest must be known. And I wonder if going to have a transparent one, is there possibly a way to have a, maybe something like that too? Essentially say, okay, this is what the possible, this is something last, you know, last minutes. These are the eight minutes around that close call. If, is there, is there a process to where a city grant you can go ahead and find out about something like that, right?
Well, I'll have some. As far as closed session, closed session and everyone, that's all guilty, this dude. Everyone will stand in their own, for the office and say, if I get elected, there'll be no more closed sessions. Well, when closed sessions are used, the problem is hiring, firing, disbanding. Yes. Well, they don't have to. In some instances, they should. In some instances, they should. Uh, living obviously has, uh, hiring and firing is probably the proper thing to do. But I also understand that, that I will agree with Martin that there's a lot of things that aren't covered. I, I've said after council meeting and heard other officers saying, don't talk slow. That news very fast. They're just going to hear this. Or seeing citizens walk up to the middle of the conversation and everybody wants to listen. Well, you know, if there is a secret handshake that's left, I haven't helped it out yet. But I think anything goes on and there should be other knowledge. You guys are kind of, we're just helping to check. Uh, as far as the Tiff meeting, the Tiff, the Tiff meeting, that was, uh, that was so misrepresented. I thought I was going on my show and I let my performance be for not everyone. Because A, I don't think that questions were answered properly if they were answered. And as far as the sprinkler system stuff, that's, that, that's, they, on that, but, but, yeah. The thing about that is, I myself, the first Tiff meeting they had, I went down there, approached Mr. Rose after the meeting, asked him several questions that he said could not be done in the Tiff ones. At the next Tiff meeting, I go down there and he suggested the same things he told me could be done. And when I asked him, it's like, well, that was in the original part. And it's like, that's one of those. And you told me good. So on that Tiff, it seems to me that the, the rules seem to change pre-regular and it depends on how hard you want to push it, whether it gets achieved, you know. But at this point, there's been no change. Uh, and there's a lot to be done. There's a lot to be done. And it benefits the town record. As far as our other boards, Community Building Board, Ballpark Committee, all that stuff. I don't know if any of you attended the ballgame last summer. We got a new ballpark committee and they were doing house banging. Uh, that ballpark is within earshot of my house. There's something going on down there almost every night, every weekend. They were down there doing cleanup and stuff this weekend. There's more people down there than I've ever seen. I'm very proud of them. And they're hustling and they're getting, and they're not depending on, maybe it's like this. They're not depending on me and hiring a mayor. They're just taking others in their own hands and they're getting it done. And that benefits every small business in this town. It benefits them. People got to have a reason to do it, granted. You know, and, and for the longest time, everybody's had a reason not to do it. Well, we've got that motor around the town to track it, but you want to-
And we get Tiff and law. How can we make, how can we kick Tiff and make it do something? How do we do that?
Let me and I go watch. Because I don't pay the overheads or I can't, can't do an M F. And that's what I was raised in. And if there's the money there, there's the funding there and there's projected figures there. Those projected figures. I have a little more autonomous projections, but there could be. That Tiff program was set to keep people interested in, in, in bringing in more revenue. The more revenue that brings in that district, the more money there is there to spend. And it's a travesty that this program was sold to the community and never exploited. Because there's the constant argument of, you can't spend money on that. You can't spend money on that. You can't spend money on that. Yeah, you can. And, and it's a shame that the Tiff board meetings I have sat there, the people asking questions to these board members, I'm picking on you guys, but to these board members, and they don't know the answer on the general questions and rules and what can be done, what can be, can be done. Well, I mean, I don't get the meaning unless it's no variety to even waste the time to be, if you're not going to, I mean, I don't like to look at, I don't have a hard time doing it, but I don't like to intentionally do it. And if you, if you're going to be involved in something, be able to answer the question, be able to, I like to say, be able to waste it. The projected, and these numbers, I'm sorry, I can't remember them all, since six, eight months, because I looked at. But the projected income for the twenty-three year Tiff was like? A lot more than it turned out to be. Yes. I mean, it was hundreds. Right now, we're looking at about three hundred thousand dollars. It was like, the overall projected number was like ten times that that we would have to spend on it. The way the program was set up, we had this program due to bank, we borrowed so much against this and go do the improvement to get money over there, but we chose to do it as a campaign. There's not that many businesses in the ground and that's the biggest contributor to the fund is sales tax. Property tax doesn't matter to that much. How much, you know, school tax, yes, you know, per person, two, three hundred dollars a year. But that doesn't build up very fast because you're, you know, and, and everyone had an opportunity to do it, but the community didn't get behind it, the, the leaders at that time, uh, the people that were set on the board. They didn't push it. They didn't try to sell it. This was a benefit to town. We missed the boat and we missed it. But I don't think it will.
Nah, I, I, I'm not the point. You were like, you're hearing about what that-
All right. Well, looking at the, the clock a little while, we've been at this about two and a half hours. I think maybe we'll, we'll move on to the real serious politicking part here. Uh, give them all a chance to, uh, come to the microphone and give you their best, uh, election pitch. I'd keep it to about two minutes apiece, Mr. Campbell. And, uh, Mr. Bush, we'll start with you. Just go right down to line.
All right. I'd say our children, people, and the citizens will be brought forth into our city governments where everybody will have a voice and be able to talk when they want and be able to ask questions and get honest answers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wilson, how about you?
Well, a lot of purpose. So I have all these four brothers, but mostly this law, fighting with the, uh, you know, with the Missouri sectors, state here. Now I have a class of, um, I'm sorry, you guys, I'm going to cut this off. Anyways, uh, my, my, my point, my, my point is that I have given out a plan here, I believe, but we all agree that what we need to do to stabilize, stabilize Grandy, go ahead and get the sewer system. You know, catch up to, you know, the basic things, you can catch up, stabilize the system. And that very well, agreed, you know. We're agreeing here. Uh, another point up is that web pages are relatively, uh, expensive, you know, about five. The ten dollars a month, that, it might be two, fourteen minutes, fifteen minutes, uh, the last meeting. Also, no, where does Tiff board as well? It seems to me that in cases, it's been a run, you know, under Bill Cooper, the sort of private sludge fund, I think that everything does need to be done. He has, he has someone like you. Uh, I have asked you, the, that I would be, kick this, you know, like, and a lot of times like this Tiff district, they become a sludge fund. You end up having what you have up in Jopla with this law, Jopla and all the lawsuits and all the rest of it. Uh, so pretty well, my position is that I don't think Tiff funds should be used to, pretty well, to do away with Randy's surgery. I, you know, I'm not asking people to waste money on, waste money on it. It should be used for our heritage.
All right. And before you go, uh, Mr. Campbell, real quick, Mr. Murphy needed to excuse himself and, uh, so I, I called him. But he didn't leave because of me. You said it.
Uh, I've got to, for, uh, alone work twenty-four seven, that's what it is. I know I can make it work. Our problems aren't huge, huge problems, just the solutions aren't non-easy. I'll do whatever it takes to get the town back on track. Say, I'm not saying I'll go without the preference feathers, but I will have the town's best interest in mind. I promise you that. And I'll do my best to get everybody on board, same page, get on the same track, the same vision till we can achieve. But we've got to have it going. We've got to have a long-term goal and we have to stick with it. And like I said, meetings, get the town involved every three months and breaks. And don't give up. Tell us, but we've got to help. We've got to go. We've got to go behind it. We've got to run this with a high Y O. Not looking for no drive, not looking for popularity, but do the job and look out for the citizens. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Murphy, how about you?
I believe I can bring through ideas to the council, fresh ideas. I, like I said, I've been here about fifteen years totally, but all my children, my grandkids, my grandchildren. So I do have a passion for this town. I got grand kids in the, Grandy Elementary. I want to see the county prosper. For grand kids, that's my personal, only a personal thing that I have for the council is I want to make better for my grandkids. And everybody, so I appreciate everybody. That's why I'm staying home. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
I'm sure. I don't like to think of myself as a selfish person, but I've lived in this town my entire life, mostly in the same house. I work in this town. I've been in business in this town. I cannot survive without this town in my current state. And I would like to do my best to keep it up and running. I think more people can get involved. That's, that's what you get, good functioning government and representative of the people. It collected, like I said earlier, I don't, I don't care if I win and afterwards I get voted out because everyone can see it, as long as the town is in a better shape afterwards. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, Ash, for, but when we're done, I'll see if they got on track.
All right. I, I am seriously, honestly, truly asking for your vote. I seriously, honestly, and truly want the job. Sometimes I look in the mirror and say, why? But I do want the job. I love Grandy in front of the media. I've kicked it off in the stand and bitching all around the country. And they're on our wall. I think you all know about breaking through that, seeing your grandkids. So I'm a little stalling a little bit. I really want the job. But here's what I can say, that not a lot of people can say in today's society. I've got five opponents. Friends, everyone other. If another one, I absolutely shake their hand. There's not a one, not one, I'm running against. But I dislike everyone other than my friend. And I think for this day and age, that's saying something. Not just for you, but for them. They're, they're that kind of people. But I would appreciate your vote.
Mr. Hawkins?
You probably heard all the people you said about what we're going to do, what we're planning, what our vision for the future of Grandy. First year in Grand, uh, in the city politics and as a, as a freshman, it was a tough, it was a tough road. Uh, we had some problems. We lost a mayor. We had an air pro team pay over and lost, she lost the election. Then another mayor that didn't want progress. Uh, you, you try to work through those problems and try to push the agenda that is best for the town. I tried my best over the last few years to listen to what the people had to say and listen to their ideas and what they brought to the table. Some of the best ideas you'll ever have is those of the folks in town at the coffee shop or, or walking down the street or, uh, where we might be, that's your best ideas. If by whatever reason you believe that I shouldn't be elected again, I'd, I'd be proud bringing these, my friends to be, to be elected to that, to that, uh, position. But if you believe that I, I've tried my best to work for, for Grandy and do what's right for them and to make a better place for, for y'all to live, raise your children. I believe that the heartbeat of, of a town doesn't rest in what goes on at City Hall. The heartbeat of town is when you hear laughter and part, the kids are playing, having a good time or playing basketball or playing baseball. That's the heart of town. And you got to build a future for that heart. And I believe that I can do that. I believe that I can be a part of, of building a better town, uh, uh, a peaceful town. I'll bring the, the ability to think for myself to the, to the table at, at City Hall and, uh, and work for, for you. I, I would appreciate your vote. If you believe that I've done a decent job for you, I appreciate your vote. I think you said it.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Uh, that about wraps it up for us. I, I appreciate so much y'all coming. I really do. Uh, I think that you have to agree with me that no matter whether you like one of them or none of them or some of them or whatever, that you heard some pretty straight answers tonight. I think you got some good information. They sent to the microphone and they, they sent their piece and, uh, there wasn't, there wasn't any waffle about about it. I think that deserves a round of applause. Mr. Wilson, I understand any questions you have. Otherwise, thank you very much and have-